Great. Right, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock, so we are going to begin. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting this school district's business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. And upon request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in this meeting. I just want to make sure that people know that we do have comment cards right outside that door. If you want a response from the board or the superintendent, please fill out one of these forms and we have your contact information and we can read you afterwards. You don't have to to speak, but if you want us to reply, this is really helpful. Thank you. We're gonna start with a roll call. Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Arnold? Mr. Burley?
Here.
Here.
Okay, yes, here. Mr. Reiser? Where? Here. Mr. Benito? Mr. Cummins? We're gonna start with a motion for the meeting minutes for our last meeting.
I'll move with the Board of Education approve the workshop minutes from February tenth twenty five as presented.
Okay. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we're gonna move on to our approval of our agenda.
The agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. We have any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not have any school presentations tonight, so we're gonna start with public participation. Each speaker is allotted a maximum of five minutes for a total of approximately thirty minutes unless otherwise noted. At this point in the meeting, those interested in making a public comment will be asked to raise their hands or turn in a green sheet so that the time may be divided equally. Each speaker will be asked to announce their name and district of residence and indicate if they represent any organization or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during a single meeting nor use their time to another speaker. Please note that the board does not respond to comments during the meeting. Those wishing to receive a personal response from this board superintendent must complete a public comment form in order for us to read you. I do have a stack of green pages. I think I'm gonna start with these. If anyone wishes to speak at the end who has not turned in a sheet, please feel free to raise your hand at the end. I will try and ask, but if I forget, just wait. In no particular order. Do we have someone who wants to go first, I guess I would ask? Or I can just start reading names?
I ask your question.
Absolutely.
So I'm here to talk about the tenure hearing.
Okay.
And I think I'd prefer to speak at the second expressions in the public.
That's completely fine. That's absolutely fine. Sure. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the first opportunity right now? Yes?
My name is Jeff Pitts. I live in the Dexter School District. I'm joined here by my wife Lisa and our parents of Ben and Noah. We're twin brothers and two thousand twenty four graduates of Dexter High School. And I'm here this evening to write some comments on our special relationship with Catherine. Like many of you, we chose this community of Dexter to live in because it's very tight knit. It's vibrant and quality of education and history. Ben and Noah began their kindergarten school journey here in this building so many years ago, and they channeled their energy by doing Dexter baseball. As the years unfolded, we were impressed by so many of the talented and caring educators, to whom our boys had the good fortune of being assigned. And our relationship with Catherine began while our boys attended phys ed and sports medicine classes at Oak Creek. They looked forward to her classes because of her positive attitude, her energy level, and encouragement during those very challenging early teenage years. As they traditionally transitioned into high school, both of our boys continued to play baseball. And our son Noah elected to play football and participate in powerlifting. Lisa and I developed a relationship with Catherine when the boys were in high school and she began attending a few of their games. And she commented how much she enjoyed having them as students at Oak Creek and wanted to cheer them on. It was during these moments when we learned more about Catherine's background. She grew up here in Dexter as a very accomplished student athlete. She formally taught math at Stockbridge High School while coaching its varsity soccer and basketball teams. Were transitioning back to her hometown to raise her family, teach phys ed. Most importantly, she's a devoted wife to her husband Tim, proud mother to her three beautiful children, a very active member of the Dexter United Spirit. Catherine also mentioned to Lisa and I the positive impression that our son Noah in particular had left on her, as well as her interest to continue a dialogue with him, and we welcome that. As many of you parents are parents of student athletes, either current or former, you know firsthand lessons that playing sports can teach. Teamwork, working together, winning with humility, losing with dignity. And it's critical really to support our athletes with positive and inspiring intentions. Noah really valued Catherine's periodic messages of encouraging hard work, overcoming adversity, leading by examples and talking to them. And he wanted to show his appreciation to her by motivating Catherine to pursue her own weightlifting goals during Coach Witz before school conditioning program. He also chose Catherine among those he approached with a request for a recommendation letter to support his college applications. And he was very excited when she applied to a very insightful and heartfelt remarks. So Noah finished high school as a high achieving student. He was captain of both the varsity baseball and football teams in his senior year. And his success has been shaped by so many people in his life. And we certainly include Catherine in this very impactful group because of her words and interactions. Our family considers Catherine to be a standout educator with exemplary character integrity. And what sets her apart from so many others that we've interacted with is her positive energy, her kindness, her thoughtful and observant perspective, her motivating and coaching approach, and her willingness to go above and beyond confines of a given school in here to support students in the long later classes. We are so blessed to know and love Catherine, and we're very grateful for her relationship with her kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at his appointment? We will move on then to the administrative board update, starting with the superintendent.
We had a, the graduation rates came up for the class of twenty four. We had, as a high school member, it has been proud to say that we're at ninety nine percent yet. I've looked across the state, I found one one hundred percent that was nine. So it should be one of it, not the highest graduation rates in the state consistently. Winter sports are wrapping up. It's very soon, they're, we should have just started basketball. Those boys, wrestling is wrapped up. And then you'll notice in your packet, you see an increase in retirements. That's because we have an incentive to hold the teacher in the administrative contract to comply by February first. So these are the ones that we hope to us back right around that date. That's why there's so many on staff. It's because they put it into the plan where so that we can plan.
I don't have any updates tonight, so we'll work to one of the students.
Like to the side, winter sports are wrapping up. I love the fact that they ran into one of the big sides they put out. But that being said, that also means spring sports are also getting closer. It's a little stressful knowing that tryouts are soon, but it's nice that today was warm for the people. Maybe it'll actually be warm during tryouts instead of soon. Drama recently set up the cast list in Texas for the Olympia, so we all got to see it. Sophie Donna is very exciting. Some of my friends try out and some of my friends will be competing, so that's very exciting. It'll be great pressure. This weekend, a lot of students, including myself, were at the Capitol. We actually had a lot of students electing leadership positions, Speaker of the House, Attorney General, and national issues forum. Good, exactly, position, but leader basically. So it's nice to see Dexter taking big roles across the state, setting a good example.
Well, good evening, everybody. I knew it was gonna be such a packed house, I would have worn my finest attire, but you know what? That's all right. This past Saturday was the winter formal was held at the high school. This was the first time that the winter formal was held during, you know, my tenureship at the high school, but it was very well attended and I was made sure to note that the DJ was very loved along with the Hyde Man. It was a phenomenal performance by them and are to be expected at prompt, I hear. So honestly, looking very forward to that. You know, we talked about winter sports also on Saturday. Heartbreaking loss for the hockey team. You know, they had a great legacy season as they described it. A lot, a lot of friends and loved lacrosse teammates, so sad to see that season end, but you know, always looking for the lacrosse guys to come back, so hope that. Basketball districts are tonight, the first game. It's right now Dexter is playing Celine. If I were you guys, I'd honestly be there right now. It's gonna be a good game, but um, yeah, no, hoping they win, but they have Huron in the next round. They're a state title contender, so that's gonna be an interesting matchup if they make it there, but rooting for the dreads always. You know, spring sports are gonna come up. Lacrosse season is, you know, a big thing for me in the spring. Looking forward to that. This might be one of the last times I'm actually able to make it here for a minute, but you know what? I'll be here in spirit. I'll be sending updates from me and whatnot. And if you guys, you know, wanted to pop out to some of the games, there are plenty of home games. I won't lie, they're not always on Mondays too, so you guys can come out. You know, I'll be there and it'll be great, but um, yeah, that's all I got from.
Wonderful. Thank you. Send us that.
I will.
All right, moving on to our consent items. I'll move with the Board of Education approved consent items in bulk. So. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We have retirements requests for leave and a January budget report on these consent items. So all those in favor of approving in bulk, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to our action items. First, we have the trap team conversion to a school sport. This evening's packet includes a recommendation from Superintendent Timis and Athletic Director Mike Badenoff to convert the DHS trap team from a club to a self-funded sport. This item was discussed previously at January twenty seventh meeting and is presented for action this evening. We do have a note that grades six to eight students in grades six to eight who participate in the club will become the ed program participants and are able to participate in the same events as DHS do. I'll move with the Board of Education through the conversion of the Dexter High School's trap team from a club to a self-funded school sport. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We discussed this at the last meeting. It's been, team's been in existence for about eight, ten years. And it's been anywhere from twelve player, twelve participants to forty plus. It's really dependent on which parents were willing to help out at the time. And they've proven that it's a sustainable club that our kids are interested in. So to make it a self-funded sport, which is similar to some of the other more unique sports like hockey, we don't want big prize, equestrian dance, which competes nationally. So it fits our structure, but it also gives structure to the entity. The, there is a parent board that is set up that help, help work through this. This structure allows us to work with the parent board about what coach and who makes sure we get our background checks done, et cetera. We have an internal account for the team to fundraise again. The purchase, we can pay for their participation fees, et cetera. They'll have to buy their own shells and other. Et cetera, but it does give a long-term structure. They've already been receiving varsity letters. We're gonna have to connect the student team, but it won't.
Any other questions? All right, as this is an action item, let's do a roll call, please. Mr. Oliver?
Mr. Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Megan Scott? Roger? Aye. Vera? Aye. Okay, next up is our MASP Board of Directors election. It is happening in early March, and this evening's packet includes an election booklet with information about our Region Seven candidates, Guillermo Lopez, Tori McLaughlin, and Jack Tansy. The board needs to vote on who we are going to report, and then it will be submitted to MASP. Does anyone have a a motion? I'll move with the Board of Education. Can I ask, Board of Director, vote for Guillermo Lopez. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Thoughts people want to share? I know we have three candidates and we're making some choices based on limited information. I've been a couple of the TLC conferences. Approachable and energy and I just, I've been very impressed by the passion for students and so I support this.
Same there. Either him or Jeff, I support. Because Jeff's been on for supporting votes, a lot of supporting votes. He's also like his school board, service role, and actual. And we, yeah, I think we need one. Just for that, then. Structured, a lot of changes coming down the pipe. Something's available with everything that it prepares to be done in the state. I can support.
Guillermo.
It's very good something. Where is?
He did reach out to us individually, but I found.
Appreciate it, guys.
With that, I guess, let's do a roll call, though. Mr. Arnold?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Spohler?
Aye.
Mr. Kenneth Scott? Mr. Reiser? Aye. Where? Aye. All right. That's up on our action items is giving policies that are coming to us for first reading this evening. These policies were reviewed by the policy committee on February tenth and are recommended to the board for first reading. Motion? I'll move with the Board of Education approve attached policies three, two, one, three, 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 zero, two, three, three, zero, nine, six, eight, zero, and six, six, zero, four for first reading. Do you have a second? Any discussion?
We went through great detail to identify a lot of our existing policies as we transitioned with the true policies, which ones we needed to update and adapt. Policy about transfer transfers. Field property acquisitions, losses. Reserve funds. Recognition policy.
You have the new variations? And if you look at the policy in the notes that are also advanced, you can see how many we actually discussed, how many we're actually just gonna keep because they are like Dexter-centric and helpful to what we do daily and what we need to go over any time. Any questions? Okay. Okay, yeah. Okay, and these will come back for a second reading. So let's move on to a roll call, though, please. Burley? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kenneth Scott? Reiser? Aye. Camara? Aye. Oliver?
Aye.
All right, we do not have any discussion items, so this is now our second opportunity for public participation. The the rules will be as I stated previously. And because I have a nice staff here, why don't I just ask for volunteers to choose which order they want to go in? Sure. I was just gonna, honestly, I was gonna go with you first. Yeah.
Is it ready for the first?
Absolutely. Yeah, feel free to just line it up.
I don't play.
My name is Bruce Brown. I was hired by the Stockbridge Board of Education to be their superintendent. They kept me in for twenty years. So during my career, I hired many great teachers, administrators, and support staff. I also disciplined just cause. Usually stepwise, wasn't a fire, displayer issue. Also terminated. Or terminate staff for just cause. So I've been where you are. In two thousand eight, the Stockbridge High School, Department of Natives, and we advertised, interviewed, and Catherine, at the time Thomas, now Catherine Kuzma, emerged as the finalist whom we recommended the Board of Education for. It was a good hire. We had great high school staff and Catherine fit right in. She taught math, algebra A, B, C, and geometry. And she also coached after she got her senior year's teaching. She coached varsity girls, women's soccer, varsity women's basketball, and she assisted with the men's basketball. Catherine knows sports, and she knows basketball, so she's very valuable. And she was also a good seller. I've got a unique situation with her as a coach. My children are spaced out, so it seems like there was always my kids at high school. And they were there during the time of Catherine, ten years of Catherine's here. And Catherine taught them and coached them. So I got pretty good luck at Catherine during that time as a staff member, as a coach, as a teacher. So I would say that Catherine is definitely a very skilled and very caring teacher and coach. The kind that engages with students, which is what you want to see from teachers. Also say Catherine Kuzma, I came to know, is very focused and dedicated in this. When you talk to her about her work, you can see the interest, the drive. I hesitate to use the overused word passion, but it's there. Yes. In addition, Catherine is very dutiful. If you know Catherine, if an administrator sat her down and said, he gave her clear and specific directions to do something, Catherine would do it. Administrator sat her down and gave her clear and specific directions to not do something. Catherine would not. So she understood. She's very dutiful. But as it really bears on hearing tonight, I have to say that Ms. Kuzma is one of the most moral and one of the most ethical people that I've ever had the pleasure to work with in my career as a superintendent. As I read through the charges against her, and I read the word grooming, it's not in her DNA. Simply impossible. Couldn't happen. So I would urge you to continue her teaching employment, and I would urge you to find an alternative. Take your time.
Goodness. I'm Deanne Dunn. I used to be an employee of the school district, but no longer. And Catherine Kuzma was a critical part for my support when I stepped away from the schools. Yes, my son is a part of that as well. My son was a freshman at the high school when I stepped away from working in the school district. So I needed somebody to help be that person with eyes and ears and that person that could see, encourage all the good things. You want a mom, a teacher, person overlooking, overwatching, helping, directing, encouraging, whatever you would say in the building. As a mom, as a person in the building, you always expect those high expectations. You want those teachers that have their best interests. You want those administrators that have their best interests. Most do. When people ask me why I left the district, I says those were my personal reasons, not because of my son. My son did great in the high school. He flourished after his freshman year. But Catherine was a key part of that flourishing. Catherine encouraged him. Catherine reached out to him. Catherine knew when he was struggling because you could see it all over his body language. Not me saying it, but Tucker. Tucker's my son. Tucker had a very hard freshman year, which a lot of you know about, right? So it's one of those that who can overlook that, who can oversee, who can help encourage him to move past it. And that was Catherine. Catherine stepped up. Catherine wrote him emails after getting my permission. She contacted me first away from school and said, I would really like to be this person for Tucker. Absolutely. What mom would say, no, I don't want you helping my son. No, I don't want you encouraging my son. I would hope no mom would ever do that. Catherine wrote him emails, yes, because that's what he needed. That's the way of communication with the kids at the school. On game day, she would send him a very encouraging email saying, I know you can do it, but you know you can do it. I don't have it verbatim of what, but there were so many encouraging words that he believed in himself and he stepped up to the plate, literally and figuratively. So Catherine is that person in the school district. That she is the one that will back you up. She will support you, not just the students, but also as a former employee and a mom. You see her in town. You see her with her kids. You see her, her husband, all around town because she is a part of this town. She was raised here. What more is that saying coming from Dexter Schools that she wants to be back here to teach and to continue that, to continue that tradition, not only as a parent, but as a teacher? She wants her kids to be a part of the school district. What a company that is. I don't want my kids back in my hometown, right? Because it's in Texas, but not here. Catherine wanted her kids here. She moved here. She taught here. She left Stockbridge clearly to come be here to teach in Dexter. It's very important, right? So Catherine is part of that village. It takes a village, right? That's what we're taught as parents. It takes a village. She is a key part of this village. From the wellness center to the school, to the high school, to church, to everywhere that she's in, that she has a hand in. She's such a positive influence. I would really urge you to see that side of her. Not the one complaint, but the many other positive things that she does for this area, this community and the schools, just the people around her. How much she influences and encourages and just supports everybody.
My name is Steve Allison. I'm a math, well, I was a math teacher at Stockbridge High School. I'm now their internal school director. Catherine asked me to write a letter on her behalf, so I'll be there too. I'm both saddened and honored to be a character reference for Catherine Kuzma, employee of the Dexter Community Schools. I'm saddened at the reason for her request, yet honored in that I have the opportunity to show support for a former colleague who has had such a positive influence on the Stockbridge community. I was fortunate to work alongside Catherine in the math department for ten years and coached during her tenure as a coach. It was evident right away that Catherine cared about her students and was willing to put in additional effort to help them understand math concepts, improve at their sport, or mentor them as they were preparing for their future as an adult. In a small district like Stockbridge, it is common to know a majority of the students in school. It is also common to have many students multiple times for different courses. This is a benefit in that relationships formed are at a deeper level than if only for one semester. The growth and development of students are more evident because the relationships are longer lasting. By knowing a larger portion of the student's journey, our staff members can have a greater influence in guiding them to be upstanding citizens. This enables students to have an adult in their life that they feel comfortable going to for guidance. This is also true for staff members. Catherine was that adult for many of her students, and she actively supported her fellow colleagues. We were fortunate to have Catherine in the early years of her career. She was ambitious and dedicated to the students she served. She coached multiple sports at varsity level and was a positive female role. She coached multiple sports at varsity level and was a positive female role model for young athletes, as we did not have many female coaches at the time. Catherine demonstrated good character in the face of competition while maintaining composure during endeavors. She was active in the fellowship of Christian Athletes, an organization made up of staff members and students who met before school to study the Bible and provide lessons of good sportsmanship and teamwork in athletics. Her faith was well known, but never advertised to her students. It is essential principle of who she is as a person and she is consistent in her actions regarding her deeply held beliefs. This had influence on some of the students who knew her best. They were able to feel confident in their own faith, knowing that it was okay to hold those beliefs as a teenager in a public school. When Catherine made it known she was starting a family, it was only a matter of time before she would return to her home in Dexter. She always spoke highly of the community in which she was raised and it made logical sense for her to pursue a position with the school district there. When Catherine announced she had accepted a position there, we were very happy for her to be living the life she envisioned for her faith. Of course, we missed having her on staff, but we found comfort knowing that she was getting what she wanted. I've kept in contact with Catherine over the years and have crossed paths with her on random occasions, each being an affirmation that she made the right choice returning home. Her family was growing and she was happy with the direction her career was headed. I was shocked when she reached out to have me write this letter on her behalf. I can't imagine the circumstances that have led to her motives being questioned. If a policy was violated, I'm confident that Catherine's intentions were pure, as I have no evidence in my history with her faith.
I feel like I don't have to say anything after all of that, but I'm Cindy Lance and I'm actually in my sixteenth year as a school board member with Stockbridge Community Schools. Because it's a small community, I do have the pleasure of interacting with Mrs. Kuzma on professional and personal levels. She was our youngest daughter's high school soccer coach and math teacher. We believe it was Mrs. Kuzma's intentional and person-centered approach that helped our daughter transform from a very passive player to a confident and effective player by her senior year. Mrs. Kuzma has the unique ability to instill confidence and self-assurance in all students. She was able to ensure that even without an impressive winning record, we didn't have money, very small sports, the teams she coached felt like they were always successful. Mrs. Kuzma demonstrated what any parent should want in a coach or teacher for their children, genuine investment and faith in them. At Stockbridge, Mrs. Kuzma coached and taught youth with varying life experiences, home stability and support with consistency, grace and intentionality. So as a board member with Stockbridge Community Schools, in my sixteenth year, I've been in your position, I've seen a lot of these cases. I think that going through this process and ultimately the charges, it appears to me the strategy in play was that intimidation. So here is what I would challenge the board to think on. Number one, why was Mrs. Kuzma essentially bound and gagged, allowing the ability to gather the support of her peers, student parents, and people in her home community that essentially she spent with her whole life? Number two, she wasn't allowed on school property other than to drop her children off to school or if they were participating in some kind of after-school activity, she could have attended that, but was not allowed on. She also had removed from her the ability to teach her fitness classes, which she has been doing for years. She transferred, she did them in Stockbridge and she transferred them here. So number three, why was Mrs. Kuzma only given her total charges twenty-four hours prior to this meeting? It doesn't give her much time to give a response or to be able to even process everything. Number four is all about context. Snippets from emails can be taken out of context and presented in a manner to lead a conclusion and evoke a certain way. We've all seen the power of context when things are taken out of context. Number five, the term grooming, as mentioned before. I am almost confident, positive within my soul. She probably didn't even know what the definition of that word was. The emails to male students were at the top of the list. Was that a strategy to provoke outrage or hysteria? Why was that more important as a central focus than what was stated as the same amount of emails also directed towards female athletes and students? Number six, why was there no attempt to salvage a relationship with a tenured teacher through communication of expectations and forward guidance? So all of these things, there probably was not any evidence in her file to suggest any wrongdoing at any other time in her career with Dexter Schools. Mrs. Kuzma is an exceptional coach, educator, leader, and person. It's my opinion that any accusations made against her character, integrity, or professionalism are gross misrepresentation, representation of who she is. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John Leslie. I live in Niles, Michigan. Just about down here by Notre Dame. So I, I teach second grade at Kinsale Elementary School in Waujac, Michigan. I took a half-day vacation date because I wanted to vouch for my friends, specifically Catherine, but Tim as well. I've known them for twenty years. We went to school at Albion College together. We shared many memories at times at Albion. Since then, our families are friends. My wife Angela and I, my daughter Vidia, we love Tim and Catherine and Ben and Kayla and Caitlin. And we, we we echo the statements. I mean, I echo the statements that people have made. Again, Catherine and Tim are the best athletes that I know. I used to run with Tim at Albion College. We had this routine where I could hang out with Tim for the most of the time and then I'd say, all right, Tim, you go. And he would just beat me. And I know that's not about Catherine, but I'm just saying that they're kindred spirits. Their love for each other is so deep. I don't question it. Catherine is, again, one of the most faithful, determined, dedicated, driven in pursuit of personal and professional excellence. One of those few people in my life that I look up to very much, her and her husband Tim. Yet she's caring and loving at the same time. There is not a mean bone in her body. That saying is pretty familiar. She's very conscientious. I mentioned conscientious in my character reference. She desires to be the best, but she wants to do it the right way. And I believe that Catherine is faithful to that, as someone else mentioned tonight. When we get together with the Kuzmas, our conversation will usually turn into how are Catherine's students doing? She believes in her kids, not just when they're with her, but also when they're gone. I mean, I'm a teacher too. I saw a former student that targeted a while back. We got a picture. I mean, I love my students and I'm a big fan of the Chronicles of Narnia and in the end of the Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe, Aslan tells Peter, Susan, Edmund, and Lucy, once a kinger, we did Narnia, always a kinger. And I see that philosophy in Catherine and myself as a teacher. Once you're one of her kids or my kids or, you know, a teacher, a true teacher's kids, you never stop. You love them because you shared in that bond of learning, in that healthy learning community, that it's not easy, but you're like comrades in arms almost, teammates. That's the kind of love that Catherine talks about when she's talking to a student. It's that camaraderie that you share when you're engaging in something hard, like a sport or like learning. I've got a book called Courage to Teach. It was one of our required readings at Albion in the education department. And Parker Palmer talks about, he talks about the therapeutic motif of community, which is mainly something that values intimacy of human relationships as being paramount. Kind of like the phrase, kids don't care about how much you know until they know how much you care. Literally, that phrase is embodied in Catherine Kuzma. But I'm going to read a quick quote that I put in my character reference. It says, the therapeutic motif is a place in education simply because any loveless enterprise is likely to be pathological. It's hard to imagine a healthy school that lacks any trace of love for learning or for learners. So I believe that any accusations of sexual propriety in reference to a love are a gross misrepresentation. Hey, someone else said a gross misrepresentation from Catherine is. I think that that's all I really need to say. I was I was Tim's best man in their wedding. And again, as someone else mentioned, they're both devout Christians and I do not believe her faith would enable her to even entertain the possible thought of sexual pravity towards a student. I do not. She loves Tim. She's loved him with all of her heart and they are the perfect couple to me and my family loves them. And so as I close, I, I thank you for listening to us all. I just, I hope that a right judgment can be made. And I do believe that I would request that Catherine Kuzma be reinstated to her position in the Dexter School System. Thank you for your time tonight. Session, close session afterwards.
And anyone else would like to speak right now? Oh, that's not someone. Okay. Um, public participation is not in close session. I didn't know. I didn't know. This would be the best time to speak to the board. We have, we have a limited number of people who could be in the close session. It's already been. We have the board and lawyers who are going to be at the close session. Will you speak now? You may, absolutely.
You can speak.
Yes. So I have, yeah, if, if Tim or Daniel wants to speak, this would be great.
Sure. All right.
Sorry.
All right. All right, Dr. Timis, Dexter Community School Board members, just like to thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of my endearing wife, Catherine Kuzma. I'm heartbroken that a person has the integrity of Catherine's being portrayed in such a negative light right now. Anyone who's truly gotten to know Catherine, such as people who've talked before, hundreds of other people, know what a truly unique and special person that she is. This has been demonstrated by the outpouring of love and support she's received in just a few days since she started gathering support. Those people are willing to step up, almost thirty people from outside the Dexter community that she was able to gather support from. They love her so much that they, they're open to drop things and write letters for her, just the, I mean, the letters that people have wrote have been amazing too. So just, just heartwarming, all these people that are here that love and support her. So I'd just like to also, I mean, sincerely thank all of you that have showed up to support her here. It's just, we appreciate it so much. Just thank you for being here. I mean, and we thank you. You're able to give a little bit of a glimpse of the true, who the true Catherine is. She's a high-character woman, dedicated teacher, loving wife and mom who genuinely cares about the Dexter community, the students she teaches. Teaching's not just a job for her. It's something she loves. She loves being in the community. She loves making an impact on the students. The charges brought forth against Catherine paint a totally inaccurate picture of the woman that I know so well and love with all my heart. First off, to even imply that Catherine's actions motivated by grooming behavior is totally insistent, the wife and person that I know Catherine be with a hundred percent certainty. I've been married to Catherine for over fifteen years, been more than twenty years since I first met her as students at Albion College. Both of us grew up in the Christian faith and we learned and embraced from a young age that intimacy between man and woman is intended solely for the marriage relationship. And neither of us stray from our beliefs. Catherine is a role model of purity and she's committed as an individual to our marriage covenant, as you're going to find. Throughout our fifteen-year marriage, Catherine has never given me any reason to be concerned about her commitment to me, me alone. Catherine has always treated me with the utmost love and respect as the most important human being in her life, has not once broken my trust. I'm well aware of the positive impact that Catherine has made in several male and female students throughout her sixteen years of teachings and many years of coaching. In fact, we were just at a wedding. We're invited to a wedding the other, the other night of a former soccer player that she had at Stockbridge. This soccer player gravitated to Catherine before she was even in high school. As an eighth grader, she came visited Catherine's room. She just, you know, was a role model. Catherine was a major role model for Catherine allowed her to start managing early on in her career and it's just formed this, this beautiful bond. Her mom, at the wedding, unaware of even of Catherine's situation in Dexter, just started raving about how Catherine had impacted so many lives over her time at Stockbridge. She was there through her mentorship, at which point Catherine just, just broke down in tears, just reflecting on, on kind of what she's going through right now and reflecting back on how did the impact she had on people. Catherine's heart of gold has had a similar, similar impact on so many numerous students throughout the Dexter community. Growing up here as a young kid, up through now teacher in the high school. Catherine's never hidden anything from me with her interactions with male students because she didn't have any intent of, of hurting beyond helping out, helping out students, helping out. Her intentions are always genuine, always pure. Her main intention in building these relationships has always been to make a meaningful difference in life, which she has done for so many people. Catherine also has wonderful relations with so many parents, some of which were able to be here tonight, that a lot of kids in the school anymore. But she's made an impact on so many. And I mean, whenever I go to events, I mean, I see the, the response she gets from parents and, and just the, the love they have for her. It's just, just warms my heart and I just, just appreciate it so much, the person that she is. Catherine's students are not the only people though, that, that have received these long caring, have received these long caring messages from Catherine. I mean, I still remember my first message I got. She left me a nice message in my mailbox at Albion College twenty years ago. Still, still remember that time. She continues to write me long letters of appreciation on special occasions. We continue. I mean, we have boxes of letters at home because, because we cherish the of words of affirmation that things are self and she brings that out and, and add it to other people as well. She wants to share because we know how, how important it is. And that's just the kind of person she is. Catherine is one of the most ethical people that I've ever known. No one is perfect, but she has always been a trustworthy and honorable person. If you don't trust me as her husband, let me highlight just a few of the many quotes from Catherine's, just a few of the quotes from Catherine's reference letters.
I'm going to let you finish.
Okay. Okay, let me just wind it down. All right, sorry. Here, just, just a couple, couple quotes then. So, so one, um, to someone that she worked with a lot as a coach and the pastor in the Stockbridge community says, as a pastor, I can think of no greater blessing for my children to be taught by someone like Catherine Kuzma. Her influence as a teacher extends beyond the classroom. She's the kind of role model I hope my children can emulate. If my daughters were to grow into adults and exhibit the same character and integrity that Catherine embodies, I would consider that one of the greatest blessings a father could receive. Another from her, one of her former principals said, of the many important characteristics in the first to consider when hiring, I find integrity and care to be two of the most important. Catherine has the absolute highest character in the heart of a true teacher. Her students work for her because of the relationships she creates with them. Fellow staff are improved, are professional and commitment to the team. All right, let me share one more from, this was from the mom of one of her former soccer players that she continues to have a relationship, a great relationship through. It said, on a personal note, I will be forever grateful for Catherine for her care and serve my family following unexpected death. In the last ten years, my husband Catherine maintained close and loving relationship. She was especially helpful to my daughter Julia, who was, she was a soccer coach of only twenty years old when she lost her dad. Catherine's kindness and compassion weren't invaluable as Julia navigated through this difficult time and made all the difference to her to have Catherine as a sounding board as she came to terms with the loss so she could move forward in her life. So just wanted to say, I mean, does that sound like the kind of role model and teacher that we would want to remove in our Dexter community? Distance from students and banish from, from community events doesn't seem. I would just ask the board, as you deliberate your decision, please take into account the true intentions behind Catherine's behavior and the beautiful human being that she is, as evidenced by, by all the support and just the lives that she's touched. You'll not find an educator and human being as committed, caring, engaging, and morally sound as Catherine. Thank you all for your time and attention.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next up on the agenda is board comments. Two things. So I've been working with the Black Trial Team. I don't know. The, it was about seven to eight girls that I was meeting with and we were. Grabbing that with the directed cross examination that competed in Lansing on Thursday. I don't know how they did. Wonderful. That's her first year. So anyway, they worked really hard. It's a really crazy set of bags, but it was fun to work with them. So. And then my other announcement is that the middle school wrestling took second out of 16 teams on Saturday, which is pretty incredible. They had about less than five wrestlers. So it was a great showing, with intense me, but I waited well. Okay, just to note, we have information items. We have a quality minutes and nice job notes included in our. And we are now going to move into closed session for the tenure charge recommendation. So tonight I have a. At the request of the employee. I'll move the court of education into closed session to discuss proposed tenure charges at the request of the employee pursuant to section eight, friends one, friends A of the Open Meetings Act. We have a motion at a second.
Hi. Let's do the honors.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight to share with us. And we will resume then.